You know, we all have opinions, but we have to make sure that we keep the toxicity as low as possible because we still all have to work together.
We're here today with New York City Councilmember Carlina Rivera, who represents the second council district in Manhattan. How's it been going for you during when the quarantine started? And how's it been to this point?
Yeah, I would say, you know, it's it's been it's been really difficult. It's been challenging to to serve when you're not allowed to really be outside and interact with people. I think that I'm at my best in conversations, especially in person, you know, eye to eye contact, making sure that I'm listening to people and people know that that I can see them. So that's that's probably been the hardest part is not being able to visit constituents or to go to senior centers. So we had to pivot, you know, and and making calls and we call them wellness calls and checking in on people. I think for me personally, what's been the most difficult is not seeing my family, not seeing my friends, of course, everyone's dealing with that. And then trying to process like all of the trauma that we have all been through and all of the tragedy while trying to figure out what I can do on a very, very local level to address some of these problems. And of course, just the how many people have died in our city? And how many of those people were Black and Brown New Yorkers? You know, my neighbors, my my block association leaders or or NITIA residents. So not knowing like when's the next time I'll be able to go to Puerto Rico to check on my very, very elderly grandparents. That's just things that you didn't really think about, you know, going into this. And so I don't know when I'll be able to see them. And and just even hugging my mom, you know, it took a while for us to to get to that point because I certainly didn't want to make her her sick and she's been going to work all the time. So I've just been trying to, you know, read things that are maybe like not news related, trying to figure out how to incorporate exercise, how to talk to people on the phone and keep it fairly positive. And then figure out what what I can do as a council member to address the much larger issue, which is the mental health services and programs. And actually, the those the gap in services and the lack of of a lot of it even pre pandemic. And so then how are we going to make sure that for all of the people that are going into the hospital and I'm the chair of the hospitals committee on the city council, what is that going to look like citywide, considering there is a lot of trauma for all of us, the process? And we're not quite there yet since we're still living through it. And then there's a second wave.
So you've been very active on social media. And, you know, just to offshoot on that, on what you were just saying, given the circumstances, you know, how have you, you know, how have you been able to interact with your constituents?
Well, constituent services haven't always will be a priority for my office. So while COVID certainly makes it incredibly difficult to engage in person in the way that we used to, my team and I were navigating the challenges. At the onset of the pandemic, we enlisted a team of very dedicated volunteers to conduct the wellness calls. Mostly, we we started with our vulnerable seniors, our homebound residents. And then eventually, we would expand that group to just make sure we were checking on everyone because you never know what people's situation is. And so from there, we partnered with a different organizations to deliver food to residents who were experiencing food insecurity because of the pandemic. And those needs only grew with, you know, with unemployment and with the severity of of the pandemic and the restrictions that were implemented. So this, along with, we did census and voter outreach. So we tried to incorporate it to to talk to people and let them know that, you know, there are other things going on at the same time. And also to kind of change the conversation to so we can just kind of, you know, provoke dialogue with people who are experiencing isolation and depression. And so I think that has helped keep my community and I embedded in really the day to day and the neighborhoods that we serve. So I've also hosted Facebook Lives throughout the pandemic to keep constituents up to date on the latest information about COVID. Let's be honest, there's a lot of misinformation. Some of it is coming from other elected officials about the virus and its impacts. And I feel like it's my responsibility to make sure that New Yorkers stay in touch, stay in the know so they can stay safe. And so even though we can't meet in person, I do want constituents to know that we are here. We're listening to them, we're advocating for them, we're working for them. And certainly, listening to their ideas and and trying to figure out how how I provide the services, how I continue to exercise my charter mandated responsibility, which is oversight over some of the agencies that are trying their best to serve throughout this crisis. And then, of course, making sure that I could potentially put forward legislation and policies that address some of the most urgent issues.
Going through this, what sort of things going forward that are you going to adopt, given the restraint on, you know, being able to interact with your constituents on a on a on a regular basis?
Um, I I think some of the thing, well, it's kind of kind of, it's kind of ongoing, right? We don't know when it's going to end. We're certainly seeing an uptick in cases in other neighborhoods. So we're going to continue with with the model that we have. You know, we have hundreds of of constituent cases in my office. So we're going to continue to address that. We've reopened a couple of days a week to take appointments for those that need help in person. We certainly know that there's going to be a lot of need. It's it's already here, right? With kind of the the housing issues and and lifting the eviction moratorium. At some point, that'll be dire. And then, you know, we get a lot of calls from small businesses. So I try to visit, you know, responsibly and when appropriate to figure out like how I can coordinate and be the best liaison for their needs. So there's some things we're going to keep in place certainly. And and we're still calling people to check in on them. But I think, you know, once it happens and we can open the office and I can be out there, we'll just get back to like our regularly scheduled program, which always entailed a lot of outreach, whether it's census or voter registration or whether it was doing participatory budgeting. We still do pop up tabling. We still are out there today. We're doing a voter registration drive on Avenue D. But we've had to do it a lot less than than typical. So I think we'll probably keep a lot of the social media media engagement because people have become a lot more comfortable with technology. And that allow us to reach a very, I think, different audience using that tool.
You voted no on the 2021 fiscal budget. Can you elaborate on your decision?
Sure. So my my vote on that was the fiscal year 21 budget. That was guided first and foremost by the mayor's support or what he would do about investing real dollars towards our Black and Brown communities who have been most impacted by the inequities in healthcare and education and housing. And of course, who have been disproportionately affected by police. Overpolicing is a term that we use and that has happened in our Black and Brown communities. I think because of the pandemic, this year's budget tried to address multiple crises at once. I knew that because of the cuts we were going to see that what the what the what New Yorkers wanted, what those protests were about, was looking at how do we really fundamentally change the way we look at public safety? How do we re-envision policing? And a lot of it was, a lot of the concerns, the emails, the direct messages I got on social, the people visiting my office and leaving notes, was that we have a very, very large NYPD budget. And so I knew that some of those dollars that we needed, that we would undoubtedly see in cuts towards things like geriatric mental health care and, you know, housing organizing, I knew that those dollars had to come somewhat from the NYPD, an agency that spends billions to fund enforcement in spaces where police are clearly not the solution, such as in schools and transit and transportation and parks, street events, and of course, homeless and mental health outreach. So unfortunately, the mayor's views on these very important public safety issues did not align with our vision for a community-led future in New York City. And to add to that, there really was no legislative action that accompanied the very few cuts we saw to the NYPD budget in order to fund what are some of the most critical services I saw being completely gutted. So I just thought it was a, you know, as a council, we try to come in and be responsible and cut really important initiatives that fund many, many nonprofits in our city who do a lot with very few dollars in funding. And I just didn't feel like they they met us halfway. And all of the people that were out in the streets who were, you know, protesting and calling for reform, this was one tangible way we could do it and we just didn't meet the mark. And so I had to vote no.
Have you been able to speak to, speak with members in law enforcement since the call for police reform? And if so, what if, what are their sentiments about what's happening?
Certainly, I've I've met with a couple of my precincts. I just met with one yesterday to discuss local quality of life issues. I've engaged with them on actually arrests during the protest in my district and happened in the Kip Bay neighborhood. And I'll be meeting today with with a commanding officer, the new commanding officer of the 17th, which is a precinct in the northern end of my district. You know, we still talk, we we clearly still have to work together to make sure that people feel safe. I have been disappointed with the NYPD's response to calls for accountability. Shortly before George Floyd's murder in Minneapolis, you know, we had officers here in New York City kind of engaging in the same sort of behavior that led to Mr. Floyd's death. On May 2nd, we had an officer kneel on the neck of one of my constituents, Donnie Wright, over on Avenue D while trying to make an arrest for a social distancing violation. So, you know, that coupled with some of the the rhetoric that I've heard even pre pandemic, which, you know, sometimes we as legislators are blamed for some of the policy that we put forward. What maybe was bail reform at the state level and some NYPD officers, I've heard them use that as a reason for the uptick in crime, which is just not true. We actually had, you know, in terms of our statistics, we're a very, very safe city. So I think we can still reform our, you know, criminal justice system and still keep people safe. It's a very, very large budget for the NYPD. And I just think, you know, we all have opinions, but we have to make sure that we keep the toxicity as low as possible because we still all have to work together.
You're a member of the Committee on Criminal Justice, correct?
I am.
Okay, so what types of conversations are you having with your colleagues in in the council about address about bridging the gap between, you know, the justice system and public trust?
Well, on the committee and a number of other committees that I sit on, I think we've that that I serve on, we are actively, we're meeting, we're holding hearings, which I think is a great way for the public to be engaged and to memorialize not just some of the questions, some of what has happened, but some of the responses from the administration, whether they're agencies or they're directly from the mayor's office. I think that component and how we pivoted from meeting in person right away to meeting online and and trying to make sure that people could still participate, I thought that was really, really important. I've personally submitted legislative ideas to try to address some of the things like the NYPD's response to the protests. I know there has been other legislation that we've passed. I have had a resolution to ban the chokehold bill on a national level. We passed that also on the local level. And we've seen the, you know, unfortunately, we've seen the NYPD repeatedly like fail to rein itself in when dealing with mostly peaceful protesters. And that has further broken the public's trust. So if we can't get the mayor or Commissioner Shea to really be vocal and public about the changes that they will make from the top on an executive level, then, you know, that's something that that is up to us as legislators to pursue in terms of maybe passing a law to really make sure that we're implementing changes.
What does the road to public trust and police reform look like?
I think it, there's a couple of things. I think there there has to be legislative and budgetary action. So I do think that we have to look at how we're, some of the money that we're spending in the NYPD budget. I mean, there are some things that we have that I don't think we necessarily need, like military-grade equipment, some of these less-than-lethal weapons, like why are we using tear gas or sound cannons? I think we could also do things like look at qualified immunity, look at what Buffalo did, the duty to intervene when you, when an officer sees another one engaging in excessive force. I think that we can do some of those things. And then we could also look at how is the Community Affairs Unit really working out in terms of the improvements they've seen with some of their practices? So I think it has to be in a couple of levels, definitely legislatively, definitely budgetary action. And then certainly looking at, you know, within the NYPD, some of those units that were disbanded or rearranged. I think there has to be more inter-agency collaboration. And I'll tell you, I just went on a walk through yesterday with the ninth precinct in my district. And people came up to us and asked us about sanitation and homeless. And that's, and I was walking just with a few officers. So that's not in the NYPD's wheelhouse, right? But people know that all of it's somewhat related. We don't want to criminalize the homeless. We know that sanitation can be a serious public health issue. Or when you see closed small businesses, that can attract, you know, graffiti and garbage and things that make people feel unsafe, bad lighting, since the since the storefronts are shuttered. So, you know, we all know that it has to be kind of this very, very comprehensive outlook. And I think those are some of the changes that we can make.
I'm glad that you brought up small businesses. And since they've, since the beginning of the pandemic, have taken it on the chin. And I know that your your district has been heavily affected by the the looting during the protests. So what is the general sentiment of business owners that were affected, given, you know, given the challenges of reopening before, before everything, you know, kind of got out of hand?
Right. Yeah, I mean, we've worked with business owners who experienced damages during the protests. And that was everywhere from, you know, up in Gramercy down to like the Bowery. For the most part, many business owners actually reached out to us in regards to rent relief and to figuring out some of the regulations that were associated with outdoor dining, now with indoor dining and that reduced capacity. So, you know, the general sentiment is that a lot of businesses have closed. A lot of them will make it. Some of them are barely breaking even. They're glad to be open, but they feel like they're just not seeing enough support. Because even with outdoor dining, and now at the beginning of indoor dining that just happened a few days ago, most restaurants and other businesses are operating at a loss. And so without rent relief from the state, without another round of maybe the paycheck protection program at the federal level, it's going to be really, really difficult to sustain them. So I just passed a bill on protecting their personal liability, which is a clause in many leases. It it's a contractual issue, but, you know, it is unprecedented times and we're in a crisis. And so I feel like it's our obligation to think creatively and out of the box. And so I'm trying to think of what we can do on the city level. But we really, really do need the state to step up.
You've you've addressed it in your last, your your last response. But moving forward, what are, what are some of, what are some of the concerns that business owners have moving forward?
Yeah, there there are a lot of them. I mean, I've received all kinds of calls and emails and DMs from countless small business owners who have lost everything because of COVID. Were able to offer some relief when the when the council passed my bill that I mentioned, extending the suspension of the enforcement of of personal liability provisions and commercial leases. That extension is through March 2021. We didn't know how long the pandemic would last, right? Or how long these conditions would be in place. So I passed the bill. It was going to expire September 30th. And before that date, we passed this extension. So I'm very, very proud of that. But, you know, I mean, I think it's unethical to to for landlords to go after the personal assets of small businesses at a time when they've already lost their income and their livelihood. But again, sometimes you have to put forward a policy and memorialize something in order for people to know when something is the ethically the right thing to do. I also fought for the city to restore funding to something called the Commercial Lease Assistance Program. That provides free commercial lease assistance to small business owners. It's the only city-funded program that actually provides legal support to businesses, to to small business owners. And a lot of the small businesses that they serve, they're minority and women-owned businesses. And so that actually did not make it into the budget at first. I had to continue fighting for it and pressuring the administration. And they finally restored it, knowing how important the program is. Because, you know, a lot of the landlords, they want the tenant to stay, but they do have to negotiate new lease terms. And a lot of small business owners, because of resources, because of language access, because of kind of the state of of kind of where we're at in this pandemic, they need the help. And you always need a lawyer when you're doing something like that to make sure that that you're doing the best that you can. I'm also continuing to take input from small business owners to explore additional legislation on what we can do. And then it's, you know, it's just critical that that we try to protect protect them legally and financially so they're able to recover from a major economic loss. So hopefully, with, you know, as we continue to figure out what's going to happen on the state and federal levels, hopefully, the mayor's office and even the council can come up with more creative ideas.
You mentioned earlier that you're the chair on hospitals. How has, how has the system evolved in caring for COVID cases?
Well, my primary focus has been to ensure that all New Yorkers have access to testing and to care. I recently chaired a joint hearing with the Committee on Health examining how we can improve the city's existing test and trace program. And I was incredibly disappointed to see that while the city has attempted to use community-based organizations and interfaith organizations to assist in outreach to different communities, our test and trace program really lacks cultural competency. We see, we're seeing increases in case counts in different parts of the city. And it's critical that we have contact tracers that speak the languages and understand the culture of impacted New Yorkers. And so it was, it was very much like the census, like we knew that we needed community-based organizations to be these credible messengers to deliver what is a very, very sensitive message. And so, you know, with this, which is, you know, about your health and about some of what you need to do and with all of the misinformation and propaganda that is out there, we just knew that the testing and tracing program had to be a serious public health initiative, much like the Department of Health had done in the past. They moved it into health and hospitals. And while I was disappointed that they did that, knowing that Department of Health has a long history in addressing some of these larger pandemics in our city, we were just hoping that they were really going to take kind of that cultural, that interfaith aspect very, very seriously. You know, unfortunately, they've been more reactionary than I than I think we should have been. But what we're trying to do now is just make sure that the testing and tracing program hopefully expands to include other CBOs who really, really understand the nuances of of our communities. So I'm hoping with with that hearing I just did, I did a hearing on health in our city jails, which have become like like hotbeds where where the spread happens very, very easily to the correctional officers and some of the people that are incarcerated or detained. So trying to again bring those hearings out into the public, but also working with health and hospitals in my capacity as chair to figure out what we can do as leaders in our own respective districts to support the cause.
How are hospital budgets affected by expenditures related to COVID and additional like stronger PPE reinforcement and longer stays for sick patients, both with COVID and non-COVID, that are COVID and non-COVID related?
Well, our public hospitals have borne the the brunt of the pandemic. I think we all remember the footage and some of the news articles from hospitals like Elmhurst in Queens, which primarily serves low-income communities of color. We saw the overcrowding, the understaffing, the lack of PPE in our public hospitals. And I think that sent a clear message to the state that we were in trouble. Instead of coming to our aid, we we were met with major cuts to Medicaid. And so, I mean, I'm calling on state lawmakers to pass revenue-raising bills like a wealth tax, a PETA tax, a stock transfer tax, something in in order to better fund our public hospitals. It would also benefit our education system. But since we're talking about healthcare and and this current state, I mean, as important as it is to raise revenue for our hospitals, it's also critical that remaining Medicaid funds are equitably distributed. It doesn't make sense that what we call voluntary hospitals, like New York Presbyterian, that they're receiving hundreds of millions of dollars more in Medicaid funding from the state. Our public hospitals serve everyone, they always have. And while I know a lot of the voluntary hospitals open their doors to every New Yorker, they just, our public hospital system serves a very different, different population. That includes undocumented people, people who don't necessarily have a primary care position and they treat the emergency room as kind of their place to go when they need services. And so that formula in terms of how we distribute our our charity dollars, our our hospital dollars, has been problematic for a very, very long time. But we certainly can't see any more cuts to Medicaid at at this point. And I think we'll need to figure out a way to get more dollars into this system. It wasn't just Elmhurst, right? It was Queens Hospitals, Woodhall, it was, you know, hospitals in the South Bronx. It was the neighborhoods where we know historically, these communities have been underserved when it comes to health services. And we also know that this is because of that really, really terrible history of not getting the same resources in in health services and programming, that there were underlying conditions in this community that made these New Yorkers, our neighbors, susceptible to COVID. And that's why we saw the numbers that we did when it came to our Black and Brown families dying. So I'm hoping that with all of the advocacy and everything that we're seeing on a national level, that there are some serious changes and and hopefully some help comes from from Washington as well.
I was going to ask, you know, is there any additional funding available in in to meet the increased costs?
I think the only real way, I mean, considering how much the the budget was cut for fiscal year 21 and how we are all anticipating, clearly, there is like the the economic realities and and the fiscal crisis that we're in, the next few budgets are going to be just as terrible, if not worse, when it comes to cutting some of our programs and services. So I think we really do have to raise revenue. And that is why I brought up some of the revenue-raising bills that we could potentially pass in the form of taxes on just the very, very wealthiest or some of the other ideas that have certainly been put out there by my colleagues in government. I think that's the way to do it right now. I mean, short of philanthropy, you know, coming in and pouring dollars into that system, it's it's pretty much the only route that I could um, it's, it's pretty much the only route that I could see um, that would result in something immediate.
So is there anything that you'd like to add that you feel like that hasn't been addressed today?
I think, you know, the, all I would say is that, you know, we're, again, we're in the fiscal crisis, so like, the money that we need is support um, our families who are underhoused, our homeless New Yorkers, you know, that's all gonna be really, really difficult going forward, so you know, I'm trying to be there for my constituents and figure out how we could look at ideas. Um, you know, even in other cities, that maybe we can do here, so certainly still learning. And um, always, always looking forward to talking to people who are doing the work and who also want to memorialize, you know, and and kind of document some of the incredible work that's going on and some of the these topics that we've been kind of pushed to discuss in the wake of, you know, this, the uprisings in terms of the racism in our country, which I think affects every single topic that you've brought up, so thank you.
Is there anything to be hopeful about?
I think so, I think we've seen the way that New Yorkers have come together uh, to help each other. Just with the food efforts in terms of um, how many deliveries we've made and hot meals and pantry boxes. I mean, I've had operations uh, of purely volunteer-led in the public housing in my district, and I know that's happened all over the city. You know, not just in public housing, all over my district. But to see the way that my NYJ community has come together, that certainly inspired me to see how many volunteers showed up day after day to make those calls. Um, even though we're a really, really large city, very diverse, everyone's got an opinion. Um, just the the economic and and ethnic diversity is is unbelievable, and I think all of that has uh, certainly led me to be optimistic about how we're gonna get through this.
Councilmember Carolina Rivera, thank you for your time, and also I want to thank you for all your hard work and um, powering through and being
Thank you.
being available for 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 your constituents and people in 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 this, and and the people of New York, you know, during this hard time. I know it's a tough job, but, you know, I I think you're doing a great job.
Thank you, and thanks for, thanks for, you know, for being there and showing up and sometimes the little things that we do in the world that somebody is watching and someone took the time to care, it means a lot, so take care of yourself, and uh, if you need anything, you let me know.
Sure thing.